We'll call this meeting to order. Right.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary to know. Board members, present.
Okay, um, on the federal side, USDA, Department of Agriculture, announced significant changes to the standards governing school meals. Specifically, they're looking at limiting sugars. Um, I found this one a little humorous considering one of our last meetings. Allowing flavored milk in certain circumstances.
[laughing]
Reducing mecline sodium limits and products that are primarily whole grain and with the option for occasional non-grain whole wheat. So looking at that. The legislative, oh, Legislative Council, Joint Legislative Council has been looking at sharing services through school districts and other, you know, other between, yeah, other and including consolidation and considering methods of sharing services. Isn't that what we're doing right now?
Yeah.
With, um, uh, the two, two other districts in our county. So I thought, well, maybe they'll, maybe they'll take a lesson from this.
Yeah, and, and not give us a hard time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Leave us alone.
On a kind of a sad point, John Ashley's gonna retire after eighteen years. Most of us, I think, were on the board when he got hired.
Sure.
He was good. I'm, I'm gonna miss him, but I think we all wish him well in his next endeavor. Governor Evers announced details for his budget. Uh, investment over two point six million in general technical aid for schools. What, what is some of that? Um, a low revenue ceiling increase of four hundred and fifty per pupil for the first year and then an extra seventy fifty for the second year of the biennium. Um, per pupil payment increase for independent charter schools, participating in a parental choice or special needs scholarship program. He wants to freeze enrollment in schools participating in a parental choice program for school year twenty twenty-four through twenty-four, twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five. Um, on the special education note, he would like to put in five point nine million dollars more, oh, one point six million in the first year, five point nine in the second year, and bring that reimbursement up to sixty percent instead of the thirty-nine point five. And I don't even remember what, what would be promised. It was more than this, even the sixty.
Yeah, it was over three years cycle.
Yeah, but I mean, the original was even over sixty. We've, we've never ever gotten sixty.
Oh, we've never gotten anywhere near.
No, um, and, you know, and our special education budget is, is, um, quite a costly one for us. Um, they wanted, they get kids ahead initiative, two hundred and seventy million dollars for that for mental health crisis. Um, let's face it, with the pandemic and closing everything down, we, kids have, we do have a mental health crisis with our kids. Healthy meals. He wants to provide universal breakfast and lunch. Not quite sure about. And engage local farmers and producers for school meal marketplace. Isn't there something about, um, if we don't get the, we don't get our, through the government, there's something about that? We don't get the, the commodities through the government, it affects our funding. We want to do that once before, and it affected the funding that we get.
So much is reimbursable.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm not quite sure if they've, if he's adjusted for that. Doesn't say. He wants to approve literacy, literacy and reading outcomes, financial literacy, mathematics, and computer science. He wants to support English, put money to support English learners. He wants to address the teacher shortage workforce. Um, five million, I found this interesting too, and I'm, you're gonna all say, oh yeah, we've heard this before, five million in, um, fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty-five for grants to support Grow Your Own Educator. We've been doing that for probably five years.
It's good to see grant money moving towards that direction.
Well, yeah, so, that's my report.
Okay, questions, comments?
So now all of his budget goes to all of the back and forth, and we'll see.
This is what he's proposing.
Will it look like this? Probably not.
But you gotta start somewhere.
But it's, it's a starting.
All right, moving on. Board's Caesar report.
Um, well, you know, I was going through the month. I brought my computer down thinking I could get into my Zoom meeting, which I thought was set up, and technology is really great when it works, but it's lousy when it doesn't. And I just could not get into the meeting. It was very short, you know, considering, you know, the things that happened at CISO last month and, um, so they told me it was a short meeting, so I guess maybe I'll have double report in March.
Okay.
You see?
Excellent.
Yeah, you know, it's, well, no, we don't do it for nothing, but, you know, what are you gonna do?
Those poolside meetings.
Yeah.
All right, Max, you are next.
So this, at the end of this month, we're having prom, so, uh, I think, um, last Tuesday, the prom court poll was sent out, so hopefully we'll have prom court. Um, I think it's a little, I think it's actually two students short on the girl's side, so I don't, I'm not sure what their plan is for that. I think they're gonna put the two, um, maybe probably two of the boys together to make it even. For our theme for the prom was masquerade. Um, I'm hoping if everything goes well, we're able to like get masks for everyone, like masquerade kind of, uh, masks. Um, but I don't know where the money is gonna go for that. And decorating, I think, is a couple of days beforehand, or it might be the night before, I'm not exactly sure. Um, Shrek Jr., the play, was, um, successful. It was, I think, two weeks ago. I didn't go to it sadly because I was working, but I heard that it was a really good turnout and it was a good show. Um, and then the National Honor Society, the letters are being sent out soon and the applications are due soon as well. And then I think last week, there's a seventeen, eighth grade middle school dance. I think it was like a Valentine's dance. I assume that went well, I wasn't there for that. Um, and then, I think yesterday, um, two people came in, were talking about falconry with the middle schoolers, and I thought that was pretty cool. I got to sneak in for a little bit and I got to see them talk about it. And I thought it was like a really cool thing to talk about.
Shrek, I did go to it, and it was really a great production, and it was very well attended, um, so, yeah.
I thought the casting was really well, really well done.
Yes, yes, people put a lot of work and time and effort and enthusiasm, and yes.
I always think those are like a really great thing that our school does. I always enjoy them.
I'm sorry you couldn't attend.
I know, but next, next time.
Yeah.
If you guys are willing to accept donations of masks, I have several cool ones I'd be happy to give you all.
We'd be really happy about that, thank you.
Anything else for Max?
Thank you, Max. Okay, moving on, misconceptions and rumors. The only thing that I'm going to bring up is that there was a report that came out of Madison that was, that, actually, I think you sent me that email. I think it came from Robin Boss's email site.
Yes.
And he was talking about a new tool that is gonna help everyone, um, from parents, help them determine what school might be the right fit for their kids. And, you know, I think there's nothing wrong with that tool. The thing, I went through it, and the thing that bothers me and why I'm throwing it into misconceptions is that they have a section called scholarships. And really, from everything that I could see, what they were doing is changing the term of vouchers to scholarships. And I think that's misleading, and that's where I'm saying the misconceptions is, because I, again, I am not against, you know, any kind of private school education. My concern is when the taxpayers are paying for it, and I think that a lot of the private schools that are encouraging people to come in and saying your tuition can be paid for are not being really upfront about the fact that it's a voucher program, that the state tax, um, system is paid for, and that it's money that the local school district can then not use, um, and then it gets taxed back to the local property owners. So I just didn't like the fact that they had labeled that section in terms of its scholarships, because I think that's misleading. I know that there are, um, people in the legislature in Madison that are looking to completely take any kind of, um, ceiling, income ceiling, top of people who could qualify for vouchers, and that's what, that's what scares me about this, because as Jesse reported, I mean, the first year that we were hit, it was what, fifty-eight thousand, and that was hard enough. I mean, that's more than a teacher. Last year it was two hundred and fifty thousand, and who knows what it'll be next year. So that is money that we can't use as a school district, and it all comes back as, um, taxes for the local property owners, so.
And that, but special ed, part of that can be retaxed, so we actually are double dipping the taxpayer for part of those funds if it's special ed, so.
Right. So, yes, so anyway, I, I think it's cool that there's a tool that's out there, you know, um, technology is nice. I mean, it, it says what are, you know, what kind of school, you know, what are the priorities for you, but it was that scholarship section that I thought was a little misleading. Um, did anybody sign up to speak? Um, board president announcements, I wanted to say how much I enjoyed Shrek. I also understand we have some new news about our, um, police situation, our resource officer.
Yes, so the city council had met last Monday, um, to discuss SRO, and I've talked with Matt Murphy, the city administrator regarding this. Um, the council voted to approve the hiring of a full-time sixth officer. Um, they realize that they're short-staffed, and so they're not able to provide us the SRO, School Resource Officer, responsibilities and duties for the rest of this year, so it was tabled for the rest of this year, so.
That's disappointing. I also, along those lines, when, remember when we were looking at the whole thing, it was, and Dave had asked that we look at this too, see if the county, it wasn't something we were necessarily wanting to do since we had a good relationship with one of the officers here, but, um, look into whether the county would have somebody. And there was a nice big article this week talking about the two officers that, from our county that are going to Luxembourg High School. So I thought that was sort of interesting.
But what did they tell us when we heard about them?
They did not have the staff available at that time. Because the, the halftime officer that they have in Luxembourg, they have one and a half, the other half of her duties is being spent, um, in the jail and the dispatch center, so. But I plan to bring this back to the, um, safety committee and have conversations and get some direction on where we want to go for next year, so.
I'm, I'm just listening to you all this, I'm, if you hire the sixth one and you don't have the staff to give it to us the rest of, for the rest of this year, what's gonna change for next year? You still gonna have those six, those six people, you don't, still don't have a staff?
They would need to hire another, a seventh officer.
Is that something they're gonna look at?
That's the question.
The question?
Was not discussed that I know of, so.
Okay, well.
Do you think the fact that we went from saying that we wanted full-time to when we found out what the cost would be through the city, that we could only afford halftime, do you think that has sort of?
Yeah, so we were looking for three days a week, um, so twenty-four hours a week, and that doesn't obviously cover the cost of a full-time officer. Their luck with part-time officers has not been the best because you don't go to school for two years for your police science degree to be a part-time officer.
Right.
And so they would hire these part-time officers, they would train them, it takes about four to five months to train an officer, um, and then they would find a full-time position elsewhere and move on, so.
And you can't blame them.
No.
Okay, well, I guess, and you'll be talking to the safety committee, you guys could figure something out. Okay, well, you're gonna be doing a lot of talking now, Jesse, since you are, administration reports galore tonight.
Got it all, so I was trying to keep it brief, but we do want to turn your attention to the screens.
Yes.
Big thank you to Jesse Durst for installing this permanent one. This one is temporary, we are hoping to put one up on that wall once that whiteboard gets removed. Um, so these will be in place for us to use. Um, we are working on a nice mural that's gonna go here in the corner as well. I've got two high school students that are doing an independent study, and so they're gonna be hopefully starting tomorrow, actually, to put that up, so.
Okay, cool.
But, um, I wanna start with doing some budget updates, and this is something I hope to do monthly with the board and to educate our community on just school finance. So I'm gonna take a section just to kind of briefly use it as an educational tool about school finance, and then I will go into, um, where we're at with our monthly budget report as well. So I'd like to pass this out to the board members, if you can take one and pass it down. You'll see a copy of the slideshow, um, in your packet as well as the monthly budget report that I'll get into next, so. So school finance can be very, very confusing, obviously. Um, it takes a lot to learn, but after the end of this presentation, I hope to, they will be able to take away the different types of funds that we use, understand the account numbers that we use, and then learn a little bit about our budget summary, so. So in Wisconsin, we use something called Wisconsin Uniform Financial Accounting Requirements, um, and you can see it stands for Work Core, which really helps our district and all districts that are required to use account code information, so it's revenues and expenses are coded correctly, basically. So you'll see an example of a budget code in the bottom there with the ten E, one hundred, four-ten, blah, blah. So the account code is broken up into different areas, and it's fund, the type, the location, the object, the function, and the project, really. So I'll get into explaining what all those really mean here in a little bit. But your first one is the fund, which is highlighted in the yellow, um, and that's, we're looking at Fund Ten, for example, of this account code, but you'll see there's a, all different types of funds. There's Fund Ten, your Fund Twenty-One, Twenty-Seven, Thirty-Eight, Thirty-Nine, Forty-Six, Fifty, and Eighty. And so it's important when we're looking at revenues and expenditures to put them to the right fund, because your funds vary depending on what, um, area you're using the money. So our Fund Ten, which is our general operating fund, is where most of your, the district's revenues and expenditures are coded. Um, this is gonna include your salaries, any of your benefits, so, um, your costs for heating, cooling, your supplies, materials that you purchase, really all fall under Fund Ten, so it's a good chunk of the district's revenues that we take in. Your Fund Twenty-One, which is your special revenue account, we like to refer to this as your gifts fund, so any donations that come in, we often use our clubs and athletics in this fund. It's a fund that carries over year after year, so, um, we just can't take any taxpayer dollars and put this in the special revenue fund. This is just specifically for donations or money that's collected maybe for field trips, those types of things. Your Fund Twenty-Seven, which Pat talked a little bit about, is your special education or related services for students with disabilities. Um, this fund needs to be balanced out at the end of the fiscal year, so it needs to have a zero balance. So what that requires districts to do is move money from their Fund Ten or their general operating fund to cover whatever is not, um, expensed or money you have in Fund Twenty-Seven. And last year, that was over a million dollars for our district that we had to transfer from Fund Ten into Fund Twenty-Seven. So your special ed is gonna cover your salaries and benefits of special education teachers, school psychologists, paraprofessionals, speech and language, um, some of your school counselor, the fund comes out of there, so. Fund Thirty-Eight, which is your non-referendum debt service fund, this fund is really used to record the repayment of debt issued, um, and so it's kind of without going into referendum, we pay this yearly, we have monthly, our quarterly payments, I believe that we do, that we pay this off, so. Fund Thirty-Nine is your referendum debt service, so this fund is reused to pay any of the outstanding debt that we have that we went out for referendum over the years. And so we, we levy money from our taxpayers to pay this, this off. And on a side note, as a district, we are working on paying this Fund Thirty-Nine off sooner than expected, which is a good thing, because it's saving us money in interest in the long run, so. Our Fund Forty-Six, which is the Long-Term Capital Improvement Fund, um, this is a ten-year capital improvement plan, so really what districts may transfer funds into this account for future use. You can't touch that money for a given period of time. I believe it's, uh, five years without penalty, and we have already been able to surpass that, so we are able to tap into our Fund Forty-Six. Fund Fifty is all related to food service, so any food purchases that we make, um, revenue that we get from students or families that pay for their lunch accounts all go into Fund Fifty. And then the last one is our Fund Eighty, which is our community service fund, and this is where any recreational wellness things are recorded for the district. Uh, we do a lot of our wellness center fees out of Fund Eighty, as well as Wolf Den is paid out of, uh, community service. So those are the funds, I wanna get into briefly, um, the other parts of the account codes that you'll see. So the type is either gonna be an E or an R. E is for expense and R is for revenue. And then the location, you're gonna see on the example is one hundred, so that means this account code is specific to the elementary school. If it's specific to the middle school, high school, it would be four hundred, if it's for ADA, it would be five hundred, and if it's something that's district-wide, it would be coded as eight hundred. Then the object is what identifies the, what the expenditure is. So here's some examples of the object codes, and you can see salary, benefits, um, capital projects, debt retirement, transfers, those types of things. The function, which is the longer code, um, and you can see it in yellow, there are many, many examples, and they just listed, they've got two pages here of examples of functions, so it's really defining what that expenditure is for, what it's being used for. So it breaks it down, so it may be for physical education curriculum in the building, um, it may be used for special education curriculum, so it's defining where that money exactly is going towards. Here's some other examples. And then the last one is the project number, and so that identifies the, um, certain revenues and expenditures that are supported by grants, or if it's taken in from specific special programs. And some examples of that would be the IDA flow-through or preschool dollars that we receive, Title One federal dollars that we receive, or the SOR funds that we have received over the last couple of years, so. Any questions about the account code? I know I went through that pretty quick, but, um, it's not the most exciting stuff, right? All right, I wanna get into the second item that you have in your handout, which is, looks like a document like this. Um, this is a new report that Mary Blaha and I have put together from Skyward, which is our program that we use for our accounting purposes. And so I hope to present this to you each month. It really is gonna define where we're at as a district in terms of finances. And so you'll see on the top page, you're gonna be looking at the far, far left, and you're gonna see the ten, and then the R. So that chunk is all general operating fund revenues that we have taken in. Now it's really important that when you're looking at revenues, so any dollars or accounts that start, have the R, the negative is gonna mean positive. I know it's opposite, but that's just the way it works, right? And then your Es are gonna be your expenditures. So some takeaways from this, um, really are gonna be, as it's our general operating fund, to this point in the school year, we have collected about fifty-three percent of our total expected revenue for this year, um, and we've spent about forty-three percent of our projected revenue, our expenditures. So we still have revenues that are gonna be coming in throughout the year, some examples will be our per pupil count, we're gonna get at one of those checks from, um, the state in March, and we'll be getting another one in the June. We have our open enrollment dollars that we will receive from other districts, that will come in at the end of June, and then we also have our categorical aid, which will be March and June as well. So that's why we're only at fifty-three percent. Now you see, as a district, it's really important, because we don't get all of our money right away at the beginning of the school year. We have to be fiscally responsible in making sure that we're spending throughout the year with how much we're collecting revenues, so. Can't just go out and purchase all these things that we're gonna be using all year if we don't have the money saved up, so.
And we want to avoid short-term borrowing for our regular expenses like salaries and current things.
So our Fund Twenty-Seven, which is special education, um, so far we have collected about seventeen percent of our expected revenue, and we have spent about fifty-one percent of our expected expenditures. Now you're gonna probably think, well, that's opposite of what I just said. Well, that's where we come in and use our general fund at the end of the year to make sure that's at a zero balance. That's where that million dollars that we had spent, that we had transferred last year to cover it. So you can see the discrepancy in how much we receive for special education versus how much we spend as a district on special education, so.
Hopefully this new budget will help improve that a little bit.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Right. Um, I didn't, I'm not gonna highlight Fund Thirty-Eight and Thirty-Nine and Forty-Six because there hasn't been much activity in those, um, to this point in the year, but I do wanna touch on food service, which is our Fund Fifty. Um, so far we have collected about forty-three percent of our expected revenue compared to last year, and we've spent about fifty-three percent. If you remember, we have a, um, a balance in our food service, um, account that has carried over that we are hoping to spend down right now. Um, we've bought some new equipment for our kitchens, um, we just purchased two new lunch tables at the elementary school, um, that are low to the ground for our little kids, our four K students, um, so those were delivered last week, so we're hoping to kind of improve some of our food service items, so. And then the last one is our Fund Eighty, which is a community service. We've collected about eighty-nine percent of our expected revenue, and we spent about fifty-eight percent of our expected or projected expenditures for this year. So that means our wellness center, dues that we collect are part of this, um, the tax levy that we have put towards, which I believe is two hundred thousand dollars for Fund Eighty this year, is collected through this. Some exciting news that just came across today was that we received, um, a grant from the Greater Green Bay Foundation, which is in partnership with the US Venture and, I blanked on the other one, I'll have to get it through you, but, um, for twenty-five thousand dollars. So we plan to use that money for expanding our Wolf Den, so hiring more high school students so we can have a larger number of elementary students or pups in Wolf Den after school, as well as we're gonna use some of that money towards our backpack program, so, um, exciting news for our district to have that, so.
Jesse?
Yes?
How long, what was that grant blank for?
The Greater Green Bay Foundation?
Yeah.
Um, it was right before Christmas, so December.
That's cool.
They have been a big sponsor of our Wolf Den program, so.
It's a one-year grant that we'll have to spend, so. So, no doubt, any questions that you have of what I presented?
I don't need any questions, but this is a really good tool, um, and I would suggest giving it to the, the board members that we're gonna be having onboard in April, um, just to give them a little bit, give some insight into, you know, the wacky ways of school funding.
Yeah, and I should've went over this probably at the start, but it really, it's nice because it compares where we were at last year in terms of our revenues and expenditures, and then it gives you that percentage, um, of what the difference is between the two, so.
Yeah, I think it's good to note too that, you know, some districts don't have that, I mean, to, to make their expenditures till they get their money in, they have to short-term borrow.
Yeah.
But we're in a position where we don't have to do that, um, because that costs, that costs you money too, so, you know, we're pretty fortunate that way.
Very helpful.
Yeah, very nice.
Thank you.
Yeah, I like it, um, and it's helpful to have a sense of the percentages of where we're at as we're going through the year. the year. So that'll be very nice to see.
My hope is to be as transparent as possible to the community as well.
You must have been at the same session at the school board convention I was at, because they recommended you do this very thing, update the public each month on the budget.
I've already got a running list of each month of different topics, so. All right, I want to jump into our facility study with McKinney Street and just update the board on where we're at. Representatives from McKinney Street and from Bayland came and met with me for our initial meeting about two weeks ago. If you remember back, we, the board had voted to move forward with a facility study to determine what needs, wants we have for our district, whether it's actual facility, mechanical things, as well as educational needs. And so they did a brief walkthrough of our middle school and high school. We ran out of time, so we weren't able to do the elementary school, but they're planning to come back. We're going to be scheduling weekly meetings with McKinney Street to get that ball rolling. We set a timeline, and so our hope is to have this project done by the end of June, and information will be presented to the board for a decision on what we want to move forward with, so. Any questions about facility study?
Initially, the weekly things will be pretty much a small group, right? But then it's going to expand to include staff and community.
Yes. Our hope is to expand and have community, staff members, even students be part of this to offer input. It's going to be really, really critical that we get many, many voices at the table for this. All right, the agriculture education update. David requested some more additional information at our January meeting. We had another meeting with superintendents where we looked at where we're at with our current goals that we had set from the focus group that we had in December, early December with community members. And our focus right now is to really hone in on where we're at with our elementary curriculum around agriculture. So we are surveying our teachers to see what types of agriculture things are you already doing in your classroom with your students, whether it's science units, maybe read aloud books that you're doing that focus on agriculture, just conversations, maybe even math problems that you're already doing with your students. And so once we get that information, we're going to collect it, and the four districts that are involved, we're going to kind of analyze it. And our hope is to create some units or kits that we can give to the teachers that are going to be lessons that are laid out basically, that they can teach alongside with their science or their literacy, that focus specifically on agriculture. I've been in conversations with the Wisconsin Discovery Center in Manitowoc, which is the agriculture building right on forty-three. If you're driving to Milwaukee, you can see it off the highway. They are very interested in partnering with us on this. They have never done anything like this before, and they think it's a great opportunity that could be expanded to other areas, so. We've also had an initial meeting with Swiderski Equipment, which is based out of Mozzanine. They sell New Holland equipment, farm equipment. And if you remember correct, Algoma is going to focus primarily on agriculture technology when this gets up and running, and they are thrilled to partner with us, giving us opportunities for some grants, some equipment. They already sent me links to some free lesson plan templates that are out there from New Holland. So it's, the possibilities are endless right now of what we can do with it, so.
And again, the idea of this partnership with the different districts is that each district will focus on a different aspect.
Correct.
And we'd be the technology, so students from the other schools for that piece would come here, our students would go to the other schools for some other, like maybe the animals or some.
And science or cultural.
So have we figured out the transportation part of that? I mean, how, how are you going to transport those kids to each of the three different schools?
It's a great question. That's something that needs to be worked out yet. We're not looking at this until twenty-four, twenty-five, so.
We've got time.
Figure that piece out.
And of course, it'll depend on the kids that are interested too.
And the number?
Yeah, the number.
And the possibility is doing remote virtual lessons, you know, a couple days a week too is, is an option, so.
Exciting.
Very exciting. The other exciting thing I want to update everyone is on the Rising Phoenix. So we had an informational meeting with parents and students that are sophomores. If you remember, this is another Kiwanee initiative that we're working on. So LC, Kiwanee, and Algoma are looking at partnering with UW-GD on this program. So our sophomores will be able to register classes for next year as a junior and then as a senior and earn up to sixty college credits or an equivalent of an associate arts of science degree, I think is what it's called. So the deadline for filling out the application for students is March fifteenth. Ms. Holloway, our school counselor at middle school and high school, is going into all of the sophomore English classes tomorrow, starting to really pump it up and see what we can draw some interest from our students. Ideally, I would like to see the goal for, that I've set for our district is three students signed up right now. We need ten across all three districts to be able to make this run. So if we can get three, I think we'd be sitting pretty well. The cost for tuition is very reduced per credit. We will, as a district, will cover the first eighteen credits along with the books, and then the rest of the cost will be left to the families. However, we know that can be a barrier for many of our families, so working with the Algoma Education Foundation, we are working on creating some scholarships for our students. A lot of times our scholarships are applied to our students that graduate and go on to post-secondary, so we're kind of reversing that and going to be able to use some of the scholarship dollars for kids that are still in high school and be able to use it for college credits, so. Our goal, we have been focusing heavily on our EL students, making sure that they are given the opportunity to participate as well, because we know that they're an underserved population that oftentimes doesn't have the resources or ability to look at post-secondary. So working with Frances, our EL coordinator in the district, she is making contacts and reaching out to families to see if we can get those kids to apply as well, so.
Yeah, great, and we will be approving the official contract.
Yes, the MOU will be in the action steps, yeah. And then the last one.
Yep. On them college courses, if by some chance Bernie Sanders, is it? I think that's his, not Santa Sanders, he'd get his, when he wants to pass a bill where we'd pay up to forty thousand for college.
Okay.
Would we be able to collect from the federal government for them?
We would have to, as a district, we wouldn't have enough funds to be able to cover that. I'm sure there would be revenues that would be tied to that that districts could apply for.
Not the individual child.
I don't think so, no.
The problem, frankly, is that education's gotten so darn expensive. I mean, when did it happen that kids have a hundred thousand dollars to pay for a?
I'm going to tell you when.
When your kids were in school?
No, 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 no. I'll tell you exactly. The banking system used to have the student loan program. And you had to apply, just like you did Freddie Long. You might have gotten approved, you might have only, you might have gotten denied, or you may have gotten approved, but not for what you wanted. Well then, when the federal government took over the program, they guaranteed everybody. So that was the signal for the colleges to increase their tuitions because the government was going to guarantee those loans. And that's why we're in the position we are right now.
Well, and there's a lot of private colleges that have sprung up, and still, it's really unfortunate, I guess, is, you know, that, that what used to buy a house is the kind of debt that the kids, just trying to get a degree, are having to pay.
And the colleges are sitting on billions of dollars of endowment funds.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think the, you know, higher education needs to take a hard look at, at their charges, but, because we wouldn't need all this debt relief and, and help and all that if, if things weren't so out of control. But the Rising Phoenix program, not only does it, it's UW-GD reducing the cost per credit for us and for the students. The other thing about it is if they don't want to take the full amount, they can take a part of it too. It's not like they have to do all or nothing with these credits, so it offers them the opportunity whether they're, so I like that.
It's about a hundred dollars per credit.
Yeah.
Is what it is. And I don't know what they're going rate right now, is for undergrad credits? I'm guessing it's well over three hundred dollars, so third of the cost.
Yeah.
We've been told that all those credits will transfer if they stay in the UW system. Many of the credits will transfer if they go to a private, so.
Yeah, that's a great view.
And then the last one I have for an update is the firefighter program that we are looking at. I don't have a whole lot of information, but right now, we sent out a survey to our students to see how many would be interested in an exploration opportunity, we're calling it. So the students are going to go on March fourteenth from twelve to two. I'm working with the fire chief and the assistant chief. We're going to provide them transportation over to the fire department here in Algoma. They're going to get a hands-on learning experience of what it takes to be a volunteer firefighter. I'm excited, I'm hoping to go myself because it's going to be, it's going to be a great opportunity. So we have five students right now signed up, so it's, it's going to be a good time.
And we desperately need the, you know, to get some youth involved in that along with the EMTs, so yeah, that's exciting that way.
Our goal is to have that program up and running spring of next year, so second semester of next year. That is all I have for my report.
That's a lot of good stuff. Yeah, a lot of good stuff.
Want to just keep going? All right, elementary principal update, that will give us for Katie's survey. Some February break spots. This month, on February third, they celebrated the Hundredth Day of School. And if you've ever been in elementary school, if you've had kids go through elementary, the Hundredth Day is a big, big deal. They celebrate, make it a big day, the party, classes do separate, all different types of things. So the 4K and kindergarten students had a fun dress-up day where they dressed like they were one hundred years old, making t-shirts, crowns. They were writing about what it's like to have a hundred dollars, so. The entire school celebrated Kindness Week during February thirteenth through the seventeenth with a dress-up days and fun activities each day of the week. Each classroom also participated in a door decorating contest. And then they also celebrated Valentine's Day that week, which was a lot of fun, she says. Additionally, the 4H program kicked off for grades one and two on February twenty-first, and they had eight students participate. If you remember, we had 4H come present to the board, and that's during their lunch and recess time, so it was an hour once a week, so we're excited about that. Some assessment updates. We are entering heavy, heavy assessments period for school districts right now. ACT is going to be taking place on March seventh. The, that is for our juniors, our eleventh graders. And then the pre-ACT is going to be for ninth and tenth graders, and that's going to be on March twenty-eighth. We also have a forward exam, which is coming up. The window for that is March twenty-fourth, I think, through the end of April, I believe. So students in grades third, fourth, fifth, and sixth, as well as eighth and tenth graders, take the forward exam. Depending on what grade you're in will determine what test you take. So fourth and eighth, I think, take the extended science and social studies test with that, so. And we also have our DLM testing, which is our alternative assessment, starting here shortly, and that's for our students that are on the alternative curriculum or special education, so. All right, middle school, high school report for Mr. Robertson. The academic and career planning night took place on February fifteenth. It was really well-attended. I was able to join and meet lots of parents, family members that came with their students. They did send a survey out for feedback after, on the next day. We got some really good feedback from our families on things we can do differently, improve for next year, and so we're looking to even make it even better, so.
How did the expanded description of the different courses and all that, that he had said that they were going to do that, that was at a hit?
It was helpful. It was very helpful for families. So the, most of the students came in with a plan written out of first choice, second choice, third choice. Some courses fill up obviously quicker than others, so then they have to go to another table to meet with their second-choice teacher and get signed up, so. And then we preference based off a grade level. So our oldest kids get first choice, and then we work down to our eighth and seventh Middle school, high school act of kindness, so I'm really excited to share this news. You may have already seen it out on social media, but freshman Dayton Pashke, I don't know if I'm saying, hopefully I'm saying that right.
Passcheck, I think.
What is it?
Passcheck?
Thank you. Was at a basketball game between Algoma and I believe it was Kiwanee. And Kiwanee had a player that has some special needs. He usually gets to play the last few minutes of each game, so the coach put him in at the last couple of minutes versus Algoma, and our students, our players kept passing him the ball until he was able to make a shot or a basket. And so, I'm not sure if it was the parent of this child or community members that was in the audience, but wrote a very nice letter that we received here at the school. We posted it on our district Facebook page, or I think it was the middle school, high school Facebook page. And at the time when I wrote this, it had over four hundred times, four hundred shares, well over a thousand interactions, so likes or whatever they do on social media. It was even mentioned on WIX radio mornings, morning show, so. Just another way to show that our students are great, they are, have kind hearts, and they're helping out for each other, so.
Yeah, I love that stuff.
Big congratulations to a few of our high school students for competing at the state or the regional level, I should say, for Future Business Leaders of America, or FBLA. Leighton Hagel, I hope I'm saying these names right.
Hagley.
Hagley, thank you. Tegan Ludkey and Isabel McCosky completed in their regional with twenty-six other schools and are advancing on to the state competition on April seventeenth and eighteenth in Green Bay, so representing our district well, so. And then, you may or may not know, we have a new bowling team this year. It kind of started as a club, and it's kind of growing this year, and so Austin Hagley is our first-ever state qualifier for bowling, and he'll be competing in WUSA this Friday, so. Him and Mr. Van Lathan will be going over there for the competition.
Does Jesse, does he compete just for Algoma, or does he have to tag team with another school?
I think it's just for Algoma. Because they compete against Kiwanee, I think.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Robertson also mentioned about Shrek the Musical. Those were on the seventeenth and the eighteenth. I attended the Friday evening myself, and it was phenomenal. The kids did a great job. A big thank you to our teachers that supported it, Ms. Massey, Ms. Schaper, and Mrs. Bader, Ms. Bader. Pathfinder and ABA report. So Pathfinder, almost all the students at Pathfinder have met or exceeded their yearly goal this month. In addition, multiple students started jobs this month, which was exciting. We have one student working at Scallywags, another student that's working at Walmart, and another one that's working in Mrs. Robinson's second-grade classroom at the elementary school, so. Our annual Kids Kitchen Day for ABA took place on February third, so students in ABA were able to go up to Sunny's Pizzeria in St. Louis Bay. They worked alongside the staff to learn about what goes on behind the scenes at the restaurant. They prepared a variety of handcrafted pizzas. They set the tables, greeted, and served the customers, so. Time period objectives. So over the last month, students have been focusing in ABA on their core content projects around major events and themes of the nineteen twenties and thirties. Some of their projects included the creation of historically accurate model trains and scenery. Another one did fabrication of a birdhouse for a local birds and was distributed throughout the community. And then the application of themes to be ongoing into the community. So trying to work closely with our community members on these projects. It's helped students deepen their understanding and knowledge of the logging process they talked about. Talked about what birdhouses do for our environment. And then another group visited the National Railroad Museum to see historic trains. The last one kind of ties in when I was talking about the ridges and bird sanctuary excursion. So students from ABA visited the ridges and the open-door bird sanctuary on February seventeenth. They learned about land management practices, the importance of biodiversity, and local birds of prey. So at the ridges, students helped to trim and clear the light corridor to allow unique flora at the ridges to flourish. At the bird sanctuary, we went on a nature hike and got up close to look at various local birds. The last thing I have for ABA, I'm excited to share that Mrs. Horn is going to be back starting tomorrow after her maternity leave. All right, are you sick of hearing me yet? All right, special education report. The early childhood screener went very well. This was in time for eighteen children came in between the ages of two and four to be screened for developmental areas such as speech, motor, fine motor, gross motor. So a big thank you to the Lions Club, which helped with vision screening for our students again this year. And then a big thank you to some of our staff that I just want to mention that helped with the event. Kayden Shaw, our early childhood special ed teacher. Karen Bishop, our childcare director. Haley Vasky, our school psychologist. Our whole speech and language team, Ashley Brown, Angela Marks, and Amy Koshart. And then our 4K team, Emily Krieger, Tina Madison, and Rachel Vandermoes. So thank you to all them. That information is very critical because it helps our teachers when the kids do enter school age to know and prepare and have an understanding of where the kids are at development. Our wellness committee for the district, made up of staff members, met. They had looked at the overall health and wellness of our food service program. Was trying to work with Mary Breitler, our food service director, to make sure that our meals are meeting the state requirements, looking at what barriers we have with ordering certain types of foods or brands, and then looking at discussing current our breakfast options at the elementary school to see if we can expand the variety of options that were offered for our students, so... That is it, I am complete.
That was a lot, thank you.
Yeah, you probably need a little water break or something, though. Any questions for Jesse on all the different legislative reports? Okay, there are none, I will move on, committee reports. The policy and practice committee meeting was the only one that met this month. We're still plowing through all of the policies. And basically, we have new revised and no changes. You've got some in your packet. And then, as we had discussed the last time, that the ones that were revised that really weren't a content revision, I would just briefly go over with you guys instead of having to copy all of them. So I'm going to do that right now. Forty-one twelve, board staff communications. Basically, that was just reminding the staff that board communications go through the district administrator, anybody from the board that wants to deal with staff. But it's not new information, they just reworded it in a different way. Forty-one twenty oh four, employment of substitutes. We had in there that the board could not employ a spouse or child of any board member as a substitute, which made no sense since we don't have that many teachers. So we just took that out. And of course, in a small district, you don't want to eliminate any good candidate, do anything. The forty-one twenty-one criminal history record check and employee self-reporting requirement. They just added a few words in terms of the self-reporting aspect, but the content is the same, that anybody has to report any violations and arrests. Then forty-two twenty, evaluation of support staff. Forty-three sixty-two point zero one, threatening behavior towards staff members. Simply was taking out the term administrative guidelines since we don't have them. So we just made that match what we do here. And that was also the case for fifty-one eleven point zero two, educational opportunity for military children. Again, just took out the thing saying that we maintain administrative guidelines because we don't do that. Then I have a whole pack here that simply were revised because of what we were going through was basically the staff, the support staff section. And what you all reviewed last month was the professional staff section. And what we have realized is that there's a lot of repetition. And I think it's a matter of, you know, if you're going to look in a specific section of policy, they repeated to pertain to that. So forty-one twenty-two oh one, forty-two seventeen, forty-two thirty. Basically, I'm going to just, all of these were simply revised to match a professional. So it's everything you saw in the professional last time and approved it. And the wording was just updated to make support staff meet it. Forty-three forty, forty-three sixty-two, forty-four nineteen oh two, forty-four twenty-five, forty-four thirty-one, forty-four thirty-two. And I think you've got anything else in your packets. But it's a little bit of copying and you reading through stuff that has basically already been approved and... So we're moving along.
How far are you in, were you in the process, quarter, a third? What do you think?
I think we'll travel.
Two hundred and sixty more. Policy, two hundred and sixty more policy.
Of course. You have to do?
Yeah.
Out of...
Well, but I mean, we are, I mean, with the reading of the numbers, I do it. We're going through like sixty, fifty, sixty, I mean, we're, we're...
Clipping along, okay.
Yeah, we're clipping along.
We have till the end of June to do.
Yeah, so, and probably will take that long.
Did you set up another meeting?
We did, that's the next question. We did schedule it for March sixteenth, but if that doesn't work for you, we can...
Is that Thursday?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that should be good.
Okay. All right, otherwise, and we will, of course, in action be asking for the board's approval for the ones we recommended. Current COVID statistics.
We have one student and three staff members currently out.
Okay, other items for discussion. UWGB Rising Phoenix, MOU agreement. We sort of talked about that, it was included in the packet. With all the specifics, is there any additional discussion anybody wants to have before we put action on that? Okay, school bus purchase, that was another thing in your packet. As, as we all know, our last one kaput, so, and we need one, so...
And we're using SRFunds for this, so it's really not costing you tax pay, or anything?
Right, thank you, it's a perfect use.
Can you just stick to six gears?
Six gears? So this fact...
It's got like twenty...
Cummins ISB two hundred and twenty horsepower motor engine, type C, seventy-four capacity.
We keep reading it says six, which is okay, but...
Brakes are hydraulic. I don't see anything that says a six.
This is the same company that we've dealt with and had good luck with the buses.
Yeah, so it's through Nelson Bus Company, which is based out of Whitewater area, I believe. Our last bus that we, last two, I think, we purchased from the district has been from them. It's a Ulybus, so it's one-year-old. It's a two thousand twenty-three, pre-owned Thomas Safe T-liner C2. There's a district down in Illinois that will use their buses for a year, turn around and sell them. And so it's basically a brand-new bus for us. And so we won't receive it until May or June until their school year is done, but this is just putting it on hold for us when it does become available, so...
I saw something in here, like twenty-nine thousand miles or something like that. The mileage was in the twenty thousand. And now, oh, that's not even, I'm looking for it, but, so it's hardy.
Well, this has approximate mileage to maybe less than fifteen thousand, that's what I thought. I was remembering that as well.
Unless I looked at the wrong thing, but I thought it said...
Yeah, I was actually pretty surprised at that.
I know the mileage was low.
Yeah, very nice.
Yeah. Approximately mileage at driver, air delivery, less than fifteen thousand miles.
Oh, okay, I must have looked at the wrong thing.
I think you were looking at the gross vehicle weight ratio. That was twenty-nine thousand eight hundred.
Okay.
So the total for this bus is one hundred and five thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. Our last one that we purchased was slightly over a hundred and ten, so it's about five thousand dollars less. This is a different model. This one has the nose on the front of the bus, the last one was a flat front.
Any other questions on the bus?
Five thousand for the, crack at the old bus?
Five thousand dollar difference.
Where did that go?
The old bus?
Yeah.
The bus that...
The bus that we sold?
Yeah.
We put up an auction, I don't remember, it was someone local here.
Okay, Safe Transportation Alternatives for Rural Schools grant.
Yeah, so this is somewhat new. It is included in your packet with information regarding this packet that looked like this, I believe.
Yeah.
Along with a memorandum of agreement. So what this is, is a grant that's available to school districts across Wisconsin. It really, you can apply for the grant, and then it does a study of your traffic patterns and your bus routes, and making sure kids are getting to school safely if they're walking or biking. We all know that traffic is a nightmare during drop-off and pickup at the elementary school. I've had parents reach out to me this year concerned about kids bolting in front of cars, parents not crossing at crosswalks with their students. And so by doing this study, will allow us to see what areas we can improve on to make sure we're safe. I've talked with the city, they're supporting this as well, and will be doing the study right along with us and willing to make the changes that are recommended through the study. The district is responsible for twenty percent of the total cost, which would come out to five thousand two hundred and seven dollars and eighty cents. The total cost of the project is twenty-six thousand thirty-nine dollars. So the difference will be made up through this grant. We would use Bay Lake Regional Planning Commission, which is based out of DePere to come do the study for us. We would have to provide them a team or a committee that would meet with them a few times to just offer input, basically. But they come out, they'll do all the observations during our high-traffic times. They'll create a nice plan in our booklet that they'll give us with recommendations, so...
And the city is open to looking at recommendations. I mean, the study doesn't, isn't worth doing if, I mean, because they'd have to be willing to...
Right, and I talked to Matt Murphy about this. He's going to be writing a letter of support if the board decides to move forward. Basically, a letter of recommendation that we would submit if we do move forward and fill out the grant, so...
And we would only do this if the grant was approved.
Correct.
Other questions to comment on?
Well, I know it's a cluster in school, that's all, that's for sure. I mean, it's all over the place, kids are running all over the place. And, you know, patrol people try and corral them in, but they're kids, and they get out, they're running, you know? So it is a cluster.
And they'd look at probably the patterns up here as well, right?
Yes, they would do all, all of our facilities, so... The project wouldn't start until twenty twenty-five, so... So that means the twenty percent of the five thousand two hundred dollars that the district would be responsible for wouldn't come out of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, so...
The timing of our approving this would be so that we could apply the grant.
Correct, apply for the grant, which is due, I believe, March fifteenth, so...
Any more, any questions? All right, Wings of Eagles Childcare Center. We, several of us have gone through it. It came to our attention that Wings of Eagles was looking to sell. We, I know as a board, have recognized that childcare is a big community need. And not only from a standpoint of a community, but there are just so many positives that we can see from it just in terms of the teachers, the young teachers, attracting the young teachers, having the ability for them to, for them to be able to put their kids in a place, know that they had a place for their kids, that kind of thing. I mean, everything you keep reading in the paper is all the teacher shortages. And the latest thing that I read, you know, retention, that the new teachers that we're losing over thirty percent of them after five years, the new teachers coming in. So you have to have, you know, we as a small district can't compete as the highest salaries. I mean, we never have been. And we have to, and frankly, we have a lot to offer, that bigger systems that might pay more. You know, I mean, it's, it's a choice for people. But I think it is something, getting the kids in earlier so that they have a better start with education. We have that with our Little Stars. But I think also providing the opportunity for kids to get into our system so that they stay in our system, especially with the, with the competition that we have with everything around us now in terms of school choice, I mean...
We can just see in the dollars that went this year from last year and this year, school choice.
Yep. I think we can't miss out on opportunities, especially when they're going to serve the community well. Because I certainly have heard all the time, you know, childcare is an issue. Trying to find, you know, childcare is a worry. Childcare is, you know, you hear it from everybody. And I think it probably came to a head when we had the pandemic and, you know, and more kids had to be out of school, and, you know, whether they were sick or whatever, at home. And suddenly the burden was on more families and grandparents and all that, and just, you know, so... Comments, concerns?
Jesse, there's other districts that do that, I mean, you've been in contact with them. How's it working? I mean, how's it going? I mean, how, how's it going?
So, there are, if I had to guess, maybe fifteen, twenty districts around the state that have pursued this. Um, some have been doing it for many years, some are just starting to get into it. Um, conversations I've had with the finance team from Department of Public Instruction or DPIs, they're seeing a lot more questions coming from districts around opening childcare centers. Small communities see the need to be able to provide quality childcare developmental learning for students. And the reality is, a lot of them are closing because of just needs that are out there. Um, and so, as a district, I think it's an opportunity that we can provide not only our community a service, but also to our staff members. Um, if you talk to any of our staff members that have young kids, they will say finding childcare is very, very difficult in our area. Um, we have families or staff that come from Green Bay, Appleton as far as, um, Sturgeon Bay, Kiwanee, and they can't find childcare in the cities that they're living in, so. Um, if we can get kids signed up for childcare that live outside the district, our hope is that they will stay in the district when they become school-aged. It will increase our open enrollment numbers for our district and bring in additional revenue then.
But what's the capacity?
Capacity for Wings, I believe, is right around forty-two, I believe, students, from my understanding.
Are they at, are they at capacity right now?
They are not at full capacity because some students are not there full day.
Oh, okay, so then you have to.
Before school, after school.
And we'd bring it on with the same idea, um, as our current childcare options, that the idea would be that we would reduce, you know, we would not want it to be a burden on the taxpayer. It would try, we'd try and, uh, structure it so it basically pay for itself. We wouldn't be looking for a profit from it. But we would be, um, um, like we are now, very successfully doing that.
Correct, so families would be charged a, a fee. Um, whether we look at doing hourly rates, we do a daily rate. Um, that's all things we can decide on. Um, but the, the burden is not gonna be put on taxpayer dollars. We're not gonna be making money off this either, that's not the goal. It's to provide a service to our community. So, um, there's obviously expenditures for having a childcare center, operations of the building, staffing, food service, you know, all of that. And much of, some of the work can be absorbed through what we're already doing, through our facilities crew, our food service, um, you know. Great example, snow removal, you know. We have snowplows, so it's not gonna cost us to hire a, a company to come and remove the snow from the parking lot, so.
So would we be purchasing the building or the business?
Would be both. So, the building, um, is directly behind the middle school, high school here. Um, it would include the land, it would include all of the items that are in the building. So, the cribs, the furniture, the toys, the playground equipment, um, anything that's in the building currently would go with the sale. It's being run as a five oh one three, five oh one C-three, so a nonprofit. Um, so we would purchase it, um, from my understanding, can I make a profit on a nonprofit when you do the sale? So what is, um, due to the bank is what the sale price would be then.
So basically tonight in action. We are, if, if the consensus is we are interested, um, we are going to be approving all of the due diligence, which obviously we would have to do. The building inspection, um, have the, the different legal and accounting and all of that. Be looking into all of that. So tonight we are not, we are not approving. Do we? Okay. Um, tonight we will basically be saying we're gonna approve the funds to do our due diligence with the expectation that if everything was back, comes back the way we feel good about that, we will continue to move forward. But until, obviously, we have those reports from a standpoint of a, a district, we can't just.
Right.
Move any faster than that. But then by, by next month, um, or tomorrow is already next month. But by next month's meeting or before, we would, um, hopefully have some information on it.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I, I just wanted to get your guys' opinion, because I don't know. Um, in light of the fact that the Prokyl Church in town is going to be buying the Denemer Building for daycare, um, do you think this community can support two of them? That's what I, that, that's my concern. That's my only concern on this.
Well, it is a self-supporting entity right now. With, I doubt that any of the kids that are going there, I doubt that the parents are suddenly gonna say, oh, we don't need you anymore. So they are, we have a built-in group that are already using it.
And we have established.
Right.
And we have.
We are pretty much in, you hate to say it, but ed- education has become a very, a very competitive.
I think the fact that, um, it takes time to get something set up and going and licensed and all of that.
I thought, I thought of all of that.
The advantage of this is basically.
It's turnkey.
Hard work is done. Um, and, um, and granted, um, with any new endeavor, you have all of the staffing and all of the kinds of things that you have to figure out and maintain. I think there's enough of a need that I.
I mean, I just wanted to get your, everybody's opinion, I think you, you, you think that we, this area, this community can support, will be supported by, with two of them?
My concern would more be that if it's exist, if it's run as a daycare right now, that we wouldn't actually be adding any slots. So I think that, that somebody else is going into the daycare business, provides the opportunity to offer daycare to the people that we, we're just discussing, staff members and, you know, those who are hungry for.
Yeah, I don't think that there's gonna be a lack of need.
We had, had conversation earlier about using the current Pathfinders Building for preschool daycare. What, what are the thoughts about that space right now?
So the more and more I learn about regulations and rules that are out there for childcare, you have to have a certain number of square footage for the number of kids versus how many staff members you can have, so. Um, a building inspection would have to be done for that. But it's quite smaller than what, um, Wings is working on.
Wings has a really nice, um, recreational playground area.
How much land is with that?
Uh, just over an acre or something.
About an acre? Okay. And we, you know, I, I get your point, but I think there's people that are bringing their kids way out that maybe that work in town that would now bring them in, maybe, I don't know. But I would, I concern more about staffing. You know, I know once, you know, if the school district would take it over, you've got that, what I always call the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow in, in, you know, the Wisconsin retirement, because they'd be our employee, right? So that would be, have to be offered. I mean, do we look, I mean, are we concerned about getting enough staff to work there?
I think so. I think that's definitely a concern that's out there. Um, it's, there's obviously some appeal to come work in the school district.
Sure.
Because of the benefits that come with it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, health benefits, retirement, you know? We would make sure the staff are certified, you know, go through all the training that's required for childcare, whether it's medical, um, licensing, things like that, so. It's, it's a concern, but, um.
Is this an opportunity to provide some of our high school students with early, early childhood education and employment opportunities?
Um, it's an opportunity to give them experience. Uh, Ms. Malone, who's our face teacher here, is certified instructor through NWTC for childcare. Um, and she has some ideas already on things that we can do. We can't have a student be licensed employee technically, because you have to be eighteen to be in the state for childcare. But they can do some volunteering, some experience, some shadowing in childcare under the direction, I think, of a, a licensed person, so.
Excellent, okay.
Well, we would have the opportunity for additional discussion when we get to action. But is there anything more now that anybody wants to? Say? Okay. Then we're gonna move on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, and the Policy and Practice Committee meeting minutes of February sixteen, twenty-twenty-three.
So move.
I'll second.
Questioned by Chris. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I have to say every time we work with that, I think of you two working on the policies years ago.
All the, all the manuals.
Yeah.
And got, and got nowhere.
Well, and given, I mean, the whole purpose of NEOLA, I need to, and, and we may as well delay a little bit here because maybe it can come back. I don't wanna.
You know, we're paying a catch-up right now, so that, that's why, but it should be smooth running after that.
But we know that NEOLA is totally meeting all the state statutes.
Yep.
It's meeting, you know, all of the federal regulations and it's been looked over by legal staff, so. Um, which, when we're doing our own, oh, we, we don't have any, you know, we, things change so often, so, so, yeah. So we'll just, we'll just pause for a little bit. Okay, we are resuming the meeting after our short recess, um, now that our board member is back. Um, I think from, for the purpose of, um, action items and voting, let's go through one more time, um, the voting aspect on the first item, which was the meeting minutes. Who, who, um, made the motion?
Patty and Pat.
And Chris? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, moving to the next one. I need a motion for the presentation of the bills that were given to us, um, and motion to approve them.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Pat. Any questions or discussion on them? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I need approval of new NEOLA policies, forty-one twenty point one zero, forty-one sixty-two, fifty-one thirty-six, and fifty-one thirty-six point zero one. Motion made by Ann, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris. Questions or discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I need approval of the revised NEOLA policies. Forty-one twelve, forty-one twenty, forty-one twenty point zero one, forty-one twenty point zero four, forty-one twenty-one, forty-one twenty-two point zero one, forty-one thirty-one, forty-one thirty-nine, forty-one sixty, forty-two thirteen, forty-two fifteen, forty-two seventeen, forty-two twenty, forty-two thirty, forty-three sixty-two, forty-three sixty-two point zero one, forty-four nineteen point zero two, forty-four twenty-five, forty-four eighty-one, forty-four thirty-two, fifty-one eleven, fifty-one eleven point zero two, fifty-one twelve, fifty-one thirteen, fifty-one thirteen point zero one, fifty-one fourteen, and fifty-one thirty.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Pat, seconded by Ann. Questions or discussion on any of the bills? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a, a motion to approve NEOLA policies with no changes. Forty-one eleven, forty-one twenty-two, forty-one twenty-two point zero two, forty-one twenty-three, forty-one twenty-four, forty-one thirty, forty-one thirty-two, forty-one forty, forty-one sixty-one, forty-two ten, forty-two eleven, forty-two fourteen, forty-two sixteen, forty-two thirty-one, forty-two eighty-one, forty-three ten, forty-three forty, forty-four ten point zero one, forty-four nineteen, forty-four nineteen point zero three, forty-four thirty, forty-four thirty point zero one, forty-four thirty point zero five, forty-four forty, forty-five thirty-one, fifty-one eleven point zero one, and fifty-one eleven point zero three.
I surrender.
Motion made by Jennifer, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mick. Any discussion on any of the bills? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I need a motion to approve the elementary school student handbook as presented.
I'll move.
Motion made by Chris, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ann. Questions or discussion on any of the handbook?
Yes, what, um, the cell phone usage has to be in their lockers. What prompted that? You get a problem, or?
Yes.
Yes.
See, but I got my notes, because I did talk to the survey this afternoon about this. Um, she, this was decided with the collaboration of staff. Um, there has been issues with students using their cell phones on social media, calling parents during the day to come pick them up. Um, so they felt it was best to, cell phones are allowed in the building, um, but the expectation would be at the elementary school, they would be turned off, put in their locker during the school day. If they need to call a parent during the day, they are more than happy to go down to the office or talk to their teacher, use a classroom phone, um, for that purpose, so.
Okay.
I noticed Anna McClure was on the staff directory. I thought she had resigned, who was that, from a different position?
Um, so the staff directory gets updated right before it gets printed and sent out to families, so.
Yeah, that changes, that's.
That'll change over the summer, I'm sure, too, so.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the middle high school student handbook as presented.
I surrender.
Motion made by Jennifer.
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris.
I have a question. On page sixteen, it says, uh, students must be passing all classes and have no unexcused absence for the semester in which the dance place takes place in order to attend. Who is going to be monitoring that?
We monitor that, um, just as we do with our athletics. So, um, whether we do a grade check, we're doing it in the office to check.
So, I mean, when the dances, are, are, we're talking about people that are attending the dance, correct?
Correct, students.
So, you're gonna have a list, a piece of paper saying.
Right.
You can't come.
Yes, you can run reports in, um, our system to see what kids are excused, unexcused.
And so, they're all dressed up and they come to the dance.
They would know before. They will know ahead of time.
They're all dressed up and they come to the dance.
And we would let the parents know that their child is not eligible? Okay.
To attend.
To attend, yes, beforehand.
So hopefully the parents wouldn't let them go out the door all dressed up.
Okay, so how far ahead of time? Do they let these parents know?
During the week of the dance.
You could have quite an expense put in.
Yeah.
Before you know it, your kid can't go.
Just for a prom?
Just for a dance, yeah.
For any dance?
But we could have unexcused absences all the way up to the dance, too. So, we need to make sure that we're.
Sure.
Kids have to be responsible.
And these are unexcused, so these are situations where kids are skipping or, I mean, it's, it's not you're sick or you got a family vacation, these are unexcused absences.
Unexcused.
Okay, I withdraw it.
Well, I have a question about the paragraph before that, about the homecoming court. Why does it have to be fall sports? Why can't it be any co-curricular activity?
Be- because homecoming is.
It's about, it's, yeah, it, at the wall, it's the fall sports. It's the fall sport, yeah. The prom is.
For everybody, it's not now.
But, yeah.
Didn't we give the math team a ride in the firework? Fire trucks about ten, twelve years ago?
Oh, when, when we have, when we have winners, oh, yeah. Yeah, we do some pretty good. Yeah, we do some pretty good, cool things when some of the other non-sport schemes win things, whether it was forensics, or a math team, or whatever, yeah, they sort of get paraded around town.
But they can't live by homecoming court.
No, it's a football.
Yep. Well, it's not sports, it does the same football. It's football. That's most discriminatory.
Volleyball.
Soccer?
Yep.
All four sports?
All four sports.
Yeah, so any fall sport. Yeah. It's all sports.
And it says in most cases.
In most cases. Well, so what are you thinking should be?
Well, I think we should acknowledge kids that are involved in all co-curricular activities. So you're saying break tradition? That's how new traditions start.
So you're saying the kids that were in the one act should be eligible to be on homecoming court? Because that's a fall activity.
Why not?
I probably don't agree with that.
No, I wouldn't let that fly. I'm not, you know, I just, no, I wouldn't be angry with that either. I don't know how well the rest of you feel, but I wouldn't be.
Man, please, then, I call the judge.
Any other questions or discussion?
I do. Students driving vehicles must register in the, in the office. What's the reason, what's the reasoning behind, when I was in high school, I'd turn my keys in the office. But what's the, what's the reasoning behind that?
Should they recognize a car?
Well, if there was any damage done to a car, we have video cameras, so, right? So say the car gets backed into, we can look at the plate and say, okay, this plate, this car belongs to this student. Or let's say something illegal was found in the car, we know who to go to then.
Okay, so.
They had to do that when our kids were in school. Lauren and Mallory had to register when they were parking their car.
Oh, I don't remember my daughter ever doing that, but regardless, so, is that a daily thing?
No.
Okay, so if they have a different car, they take, maybe there's cars in the shops, or they take mom's car, do they have to register that, or just, okay?
What about bringing a tractor to the school? I have that.
The tractors? I know, and I've seen a horse, a couple horses come in, too.
Some districts will charge students for parking passes as well.
I know.
And it gives us an idea of how many students are planning on bringing their vehicle. So again, we have an idea of the space requirement and that kind of thing. One final thing that I want to note is that the board goals are not the updated ones in the high school.
Page.
The very first introductory. So if you can just make sure that, they were updated ones in the elementary school, but not in the high school. Anything else for anybody? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the UWGB Rising BMOU agreement.
I surrender.
Second?
I'll second that.
Oh, I think Chris already did.
Oh, you do, okay.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Chris. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the purchase of the bus from Nelson Bus Company not to exceed one hundred five thousand dollars, nine hundred and twenty-three.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ann, seconded by Pat. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the resolution with Bay Lake Regional Planning Commission not to exceed twenty percent or five thousand two hundred and four dollars and eighty cents of the total awarded grant amount of twenty-six thousand thirty-nine dollars. This, again, approval of this will allow us to apply for this grant.
I surrender.
Motion by?
Pat.
Pat? Seconded by Jennifer. Questions or discussion on that?
So if we don't get the grant?
We don't do it.
We don't spend the money much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the building inspection of Wings of Eagles Childcare Center located at fifteen oh five Flor Avenue, Algoma, not to exceed four hundred dollars and the costs associated with Amundson Davis LLC Legal Counsel to explore the expenses for the purchase of the property.
I'll move.
Motion made by Ann, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chris. Questions or discussion on that?
Who's gonna be doing that building inspection?
It needs to be someone who's licensed to the state, so I believe her name is Jane Dray.
And you already got a cost on there?
Yeah, for a hundred dollars.
That didn't seem like a lot to me from my banking days, so.
Specific to a childcare center.
Correct, you have to be licensed specifically just to do a childcare inspection.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the MOU with the Algoma Area Education Foundation for the Director of Philanthropy and Innovation Position. I surrender. Motion made by Jennifer, I have a second. I'll second, seconded by Ann. It was in your packet, it just delineates everything we talked about when Patrick was asked.
Just to get everybody's memory, and if anybody's watching, that this is not gonna cost the district anything, this is all on the foundations.
Right. It just delineates the responsibilities of both parties.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No recommended, recommended changes in a COVID request for future agenda items? I'd forgotten to put it on this month, but we had so many, so much on it anyway. But I would like to have the opportunity for those of us who went to convention to just bring some of the tidbits before we lose all those golden tidbits to, so just share content from the convention. Anything else for anybody? All right, I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five, subsections one, CEFNI, for the purpose of personnel matters, hire, staffing, and.
I surrender.
Motion made by Jennifer, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Pat. Roll call vote, Dave?
Aye.
Pat?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Hi.
Mick?
Yep.
Yes, Ann?
Yes.
Chris, can I also say yes?